Everyone to the twenty six April twenty twenty two Winchester Planning Board meeting. We are being recorded over Zoom and also Wind Cam is broadcasting us out to the to our cable people and to the stars hopefully. So, thank you Wind Cam. If you need to get ahold of us, you can always call us or sorry, you can always email at us at planningboard@winchester.us. And that email goes out to the entire board as well as Brian Zekely, our town planner. So, we should, since I just opened, why don't we do a roll call vote so everyone knows who's here? Nick Rosettos.
Present.
Eching Scott.
Present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
And I'm the chair, present. So, we have a really packed schedule this evening, so why don't we dive right into it? One of the things that we we've talked about last time, there was a ZBA petition about a lot on Abbey Road. And we talked about getting a follow up on two items. One was the status of the as-built drawings for the engineering for the stormwater management system. And also what the options were to the planning board in terms of reopening the subdivision. So, this afternoon, there was a meeting between Brian Zekely, Town Engineer Beth Rudolph, Assistant Town Engineer Brian Mantor, Town Council Art Krieger, Town Council Brian, can you help me? Who was the second town council?
Sorry, I couldn't find that, but Kristen, I believe.
Kristen, I don't know that I've met Kristen before. Brian and myself, I think that was all the people that were involved. There were quite a few of us, so. We discussed the status of the as-bills. The as-bills are still undergoing. There, we've reached out to the engineer record on the drawing in order to ensure that they are complete. There are, there's still money left in the escrow from the subdivision, which if required, we could use to ensure completeness. We don't know whether that will be required, but there's some eleven thousand dollars which would be available for that. We also talked about what the role was in terms of whether we would, we didn't get to whether we needed to open up subdivision. If we do, we can. But since we do have money in the escrow to handle contingencies where for conditions on the permit on the subdivision rather, that should be sufficient to ensure that we get that work done. But if we do need to reopen subdivision, then we could. Because the conditions haven't been met for our, for the subdivision. We also talked about the division of who gets to deal with what in terms of this property. So, there are two things going on. There's stormwater. There's, there are concerns raised by town residents about the stormwater management and whether it is sufficient for the site. And then there are concerns about whether or not the as-bills or as-bills are actually correct. So, those are two separate issues. On the one side, in terms of the as-bills, that's something Engineering Department is working. Any questions as to whether or not the stormwater management system is actually appropriately built is something which really has, is something that, since we are beyond the appeal process for the subdivision, the appropriate person to direct that to would be to the the designer of the system, the engineering firm of the system and the owners of the property. Not to our town engineering department. We hired a peer-reviewed, the, the design was peer-reviewed by an external consultant and they are the the ones on record have saying that it was correctly done. Our engineering staff is not going to redo their work. And so, reaching out to us for that is, at this point, inappropriate. The communication really should be between people who feel that there's something wrong with that system and the the developers. So, we've also made it clear that because this is a subdivision issue that, and we want to ensure that engineering is really focused on the parts that engineering is responsible for, that any further comments about the subdivision, any questions about the stormwater issues should be going to the planning board because it's, it's we who control the subdivisions. And they shouldn't be going, it can go to the, to the engineering department, but the engineering department's been asked to wait until planning board receives those requests and we'll determine if it's appropriate for the town engineering. They're spending an awful lot of effort on this and it's because the comments that are coming in are mixed in between dealing with whether or not the stormwater system itself is working versus things that are really under engineering's purview, namely as-bills. They're trying to do both of those and I think it's important that we as the public body who is in charge of subdivision, give them a little bit of buffer and also may help make the decision as to where they should go. Brian, did I miss anything? I went on for far too long.
The only thing that, that probably Brian Mantor would have added was that out of the two issues that were raised for the as-bills, one of them actually has already been, it was, was correct, meaning that it is not a mistake. There was a change in the field that was approved by engineering at the time of the change. So, it, it's just, it was just correct. The as-built is, is, is exactly how it should be. There's another issue that they're going to get to the bottom of in terms of, I mean, this is really specific detail to why a pipe is coming in at twelve o'clock when it should have been coming in at ten o'clock. I'm not making this up. That is, that, that, it's, that, that is what we're talking about and the small details like this. So, that, that's the only other update is that half of the issue is already, was correct. It was, it was correct. So, that was the only thing. But in the essence of time, probably we move on to minutes. Yeah?
There's minutes. There's also in our packet today, there's something real quick. There's been a request from the Sustainability Director to have the planning board provide a Oh, Brian, could you bring that up please? Because I'm going to get it wrong.
Yeah, hold on a second. Into the packet? I was not.
It should, it is in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, hold on.
This is just a quick request for our support for an application for, I believe, two pilot programs for drainage. And the planning board has provided that support in the past just via a letter. This is for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. I always call that something else, but MVP. So, the planning board has supported this in the past. It's just a letter of support. And apparently they didn't get it last time, so they're trying again.
So, yeah, it's the same, it's the same thing. The, the application is the same for these two nature-based stormwater features. If you want more information, we can certainly get that to you. But again, this is just a quick letter of support for nature-based solutions.
Yeah, the due date on this is May fifth, I believe, so we can, with the, with the boards, okay, I'll just sign off on this. This is pretty straightforward, just. Or we can wait until the end of this meeting where you might have a chance to surreptitiously read this if you haven't seen it before. But.
Well, I'll just comment and say that I thought, based on the description that was on the third page. Oh, is it the third page?
There, yeah, there's a drawing.
Oh, four page, that it's a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, this isn't, this isn't, I think, something that's a huge deal. It's just a letter of support.
No, it gets us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to mess with if we can do it.
Well, yeah, it gets a town that much. So, if there are no I'll just go through consent. If there are any objections, please raise them. If not, we'll just go ahead with that. Okay? So, why don't we move on?
Can we go back to updates?
Yeah, we're at updates and we want to, we still need to get minutes in there, so go ahead.
Right, so I just have a question about the eleven thousand dollars that's left over in the subdivision account for the Abbey Road sub-development. And you mentioned that it is needed for conditions. And so, without digging into my giant file, I was just curious how it was worded, the release of that eleven thousand dollars.
So, it's actually thirteen, just so to be more precise. It's thirteen thousand dollars, which would be the cost for, for us to hire someone to do the entire as-bills. We actually asked legal counsel about that, what that can be used for. It can barely, since it's for the as-bills, it can be used to do the as-bills, meaning having someone go out and do it. Or it could be someone to verify, for example, or you know, do a TV camera kind of remote something for VHB to do their job to, to verify. So, we can, we could use that if necessary. At the moment, at the moment, it is not necessary.
Right, and so, in fact, the, the person, the subdivision applicant has never gotten that thirteen thousand back because they never asked for it?
We have never gotten final as-bills as a Mylar set, so we haven't released that money. It's still, the subdivision is still, that, yeah, I think the, very quickly, because we, this was not an agenda item, so getting into, no, you shouldn't know. This is an important update. I don't want, I'm not trying to push it away because it's extremely important. There's ZBA petitions, there's subdivision applications, there's a lot, and that's why we're trying to have a, you know, a coherent response from the town. So, maybe that's enough for now.
That was helpful, yes.
We can always come back to it at a later meeting.
Yes, yeah.
So, why don't we?
Can I just ask another question about Abbey Road that was the Housing Partnership Board letter? And we don't have to talk about it in this meeting if we can put it on the next meeting?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Abbey Road will be with us for the foreseeable future, I fear. So.
That'll be on a future meeting, this question?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, good.
So, why don't we go through the meeting minutes? And I know Sally has distributed some comments and I believe they were on the fifteenth. So.
Brian indicated that we can just refer to my memo of five thirty-nine today and, and with the planning board's consent.
Right. So, has, has, has the board had a chance to read Sally's email with her?
When did it go out?
I sent it, and, and I sent it out at five forty this evening. So, apologize, apologies for that. I didn't want to have this big thing take up the time of the meeting. What I did was review the tape from the meeting. I wanted my remarks as they were described in the third paragraph and the sixth paragraph of page four to be fleshed out more. So, I reviewed the tape and documented what I actually said in the meeting.
Gosh, I, I've not had a chance to look at that email, you know? I, I, I have, I, I have it up here on the screen. I, I have reviewed it and, yeah, if, if that means anything, then this is what Sally said. Okay.
Okay, so if it's, if it's okay with the board, if there are no other, are there any other comments on the March fifteenth? Minutes?
None from it.
Okay, Eching?
It's a lot more robust, so thank you Nancy. I, I think it's.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of March fifteen twenty twenty-two as amended by Sally's email?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Kurt?
Aye.
Eching?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
And Debs says aye as well, thank you. And see which one, what's the date on the next one, please Brian? Oh, March twenty-ninth. Are there any comments on the planning board meeting minutes of March twenty-ninth?
I had edits on pages one and two.
Okay, are they just scribbler's notes or are they?
No, no, it's, it's, it's on, in the first one, Mr. Zekely speaks of the MBTA law. And I wanted to be more precise about what it said in the minutes.
Oh, so where it says, are you talking about one A?
One A. So, what Nancy recorded was there's an MBTA zoning change.
Yep.
And what it actually is, it's a state law that went into effect regarding MBTA communities.
Okay, yep.
And, and it, what it is, is that they're being expected to comply with this law. I don't think that it's a requirement and because in the third sentence, where it says there is no penalty if a community does not fulfill, what I understand is if a community does not fulfill, then we are not eligible for mass works grants and state housing choice grants. And so, to the extent that those can be deemed a penalty, I didn't know if we wanted to correct the minutes.
Yeah, there's also our non-compliance can be taken into account when the DHCD reviews applications for other things, so.
So, we should, there is, it's incorrect to say there's no penalty. Our goal is to comply. There's no penalties if we don't.
This was a clarif, this was a clarification actually coming out of, it's not, it was not the FAQs, actually. This was coming out of DHCD that it was a clarification that John Serbeer actually, I believe, uncovered, correct? Yeah?
There was actually the line, there is a line in the guidelines talking about.
How it affects other project types, yeah?
Yeah, so I don't know exact language. I, I agree, there should be modified.
Well, I got this language from an article. I don't know who sent it to me. It might have been Carol Savage sent it to me, but it specifically says that, that communities will not be eligible for mass works grants or state housing choice grants.
Right, so.
Or, or local, or local projects. It's three, there are three specific.
So, let's.
In the minutes, I think that's relevant.
Yeah, I can work with Nancy to get that.
Yeah, those are direct, you can get those directly out of the guidelines.
That it was in the bulleted list on page two.
Okay.
So, the first one, just by going by what you said in town meeting last night, that we would have the North Main Street zoning bylaws ready for fall twenty-three? Deab?
So, I don't know that this list is, so the question is, what did we say at the meeting?
Ah, good point, okay.
And so, we may have, we may have become more realistic since.
Yeah, that's fine. And then on the, I don't know, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the eighth bullet that starts with the words develop a better process to expedite permits that are quote not, that are not quote our own. It's that we are, permits that we are asked by the ZBA to consider and report back on. Isn't that what we were talking about?
Yeah, so that would be, yeah.
That the ZBA asked us to consider and report.
Well, there, we are, we are, you know, there's, our zoning requires us to provide advice to the zoning board, so.
But just, I just, it was the our own thing. I wanted a better way of saying.
So, with those two, I, I think, so whatever language you come up with there, I think would be.
So, I wrote, develop a better process to expedite special permit applications that we are asked by the zoning board of appeals to consider and report on.
So, we're not.
And to provide a recommendation on.
Yeah, so the key is we're not expediting the permit or expediting our review. So, yeah.
Right, right, right. A better process to expedite our review.
Of site plan reviews and special permits.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I have one, I have one for number four. When we interviewed the consultants, I thought we had deliberated afterwards. Do we not?
We, we, we took a break because we had ZBA petitions.
Oh.
And then we came in and you'll see right at the end. Yeah, yeah, that confused me at first part two. And then I realized that we had, we were running out of overtime and so we had to jump. Any other, any other comments? In that case, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-ninth twenty twenty-two as amended? And Sally and Brian will work together to get the language correct.
The move.
Axel, roll call vote, please. Nick?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Eching?
Aye.
Aye.
And Debs says aye as well. I'm going to try to stay in the same order, but when Brian stops sharing, everything gets mixed up. Okay, so I believe, was that all of it for their minutes?
There's one more.
There's one more? Okay, so why don't we, we do have, we do have Form and Place coming in but a little later, so I think we're still good. Okay, so any comments on the April twelfth planning board meeting?
I have an edit on page one and a question on page four.
Okay.
On page one, Nancy, it's Anderson with an O N and it's Krieger K R I E.
Actually, I thought, isn't that?
My question on page four, oh, well, there's also on the top of page four, it's the D H C D, not the D A C D. And then, my question is actually about the Ms. Scott's comments. So, I guess, I mean, you, you had a really long set of observations and, and considerations and maybe it's probably better if you talk, if there's anything in there that you thought.
Yeah, I did. I did.
Oh, I was gonna say, first of all, it is EI, first of all, Krieger. So, it is EI, it is EI, but it is O N, but it is O N Anderson.
Internet, on the internet, it said IE. Is it really EI?
I, I just went to that website. It's EI.
Good, good. Yay for Nancy. Sorry, people.
But, well, to be fair, half, it's Anderson with, with an O N, not to be nitpicky, but, uh, we'll just keep going.
Yeah, I did have a bunch of things in there too, Nancy. So, when I was talking about the Parkhurst, I think half, maybe lines five or six, it says the offices are currently at the Parkhurst building. It's a misuse of space classrooms house two people. I think what I meant to say was that the Parkhurst was built as a classroom building. It is now used as an admin space, so it's a misuse of space. But the classroom houses two people seems like a, it would be erroneous there. I think I was using, use that as an example. So, if I could strike that. But also, the part, maybe two-thirds down, it says, people opposed, don't want to spend so much for admin buildings. I don't want to presume I know why people are opposing it. And so, I, I'm not sure that I meant to put that as a, I don't, I don't know how it was interpreted, but I, I don't want to make that a blanket statement. So, if there's a way to to, to fix that so that it's, I don't, I don't.
Could you just say, Eching, some people who are opposed?
I think may. I, I thought I said, I don't understand why, I don't know what the reasons are for that people have. And it's, I would acknowledge that it's very complicated. But that seems like a blanket statement to me, which I, isn't what I meant. And I didn't review the tapes to see what I actually said. So, if, if possible, could I review the tapes and can we review this again?
Sure, if that. I think that's, that's a great solution. Any other? I think that, so why don't we just punt this until our next meeting?
Thank you.
Which is great, because then we can try to get back on schedule. So, our, is that it for minutes? I think so. So, the next thing on our schedule, and Brian, if you could put our agenda back up so I can get the sense of what the timetable is. I should bring up my own. I seem to have forgotten to do that.
So, we've eaten up the public outreach education kind of portion, at least those fifteen minutes. I, I do actually see John Ruffo and Mike Wang, Ruffo and Mike Wang from Form and Place, but I might, they're just here for a little bit of fun at the moment, I'm guessing. Because at the moment, we're on, not until seven forty-five for Form and Place. But they are here at the moment, so it's up to you whether you want to kind of bump, bump it up and then move these things forward just simply because they're both here.
Okay, so I think that for people who are chiming, who are, who are going to come in till if they, I think it's more, it's important to keep them at seven forty-five for people who are, are remote viewers who might be coming in for that.
So, then I think we just pick one, we pick one of these. Now, we either do public outreach education or we go through the town meeting process document. And we just pick one of those and do those until seven forty-five.
So, is there a preference? So, the idea of public outreach was to talk more about how we, how we interact with town residents. And everyone, I believe, hopefully has a chance, has a chance to look at Sally's process document. So, which one would the board like to look at for, we have real quick, if you just, why don't we just do vote? Vote for public outreach and education.
Sorry, when was Sally's document sent?
It's part of.
It's in the packet. It's part of the packet.
Okay.
I admit, I haven't read it.
Okay, so.
What I, what I would like to say is that because it's a timeline for rolling out ideas to town meeting in stages and the first step in a timeline is early May, that I thought it would be timely since this is late April or mid-April to talk about understanding this process. But I defer to others if they'd like to put it off to the next meeting. I'm not sure what the date is.
I mean, just to chime in for a second, I think, I mean, this is something that at least we all can be looking at, even if it's for the first time, we can all be looking at it at the same time. There's a little more structure or a lot more structure. I don't want to put, but the amount of work that Sally did to put this together at all is extremely helpful. So, I think because this document is in front of us, I think we could be able to get a little bit more done. So, I think we should dive into this.
Okay, let's dive in.
So, what, what I did here was, I asked Heather von Mering, as you can see from the upper right corner, I spoke to her in April, which is still the month we're in. And, and so I came up with this timeline. I just, I want to make sure Eching has a chance to look at it while we're talking. Oh, it's on the screen too. I see that now. Yeah. So, Brian, do you want me to walk this or you want, how shall?
No, I, 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 I think this is your, your, I mean, honestly, I think, I, I think that if there's anything that I disagree with, I'll, I'll just be like anybody else here saying a comment.
That's great. Okay, so one, one of the things that's been a challenge for me ever since I came on the planning board and even before was to understand when is it too late to do something to get it to town meeting? And in the very shortest extreme, any citizen in town can get something on the warrant and there's a procedure that's available on the town website for that. But my experience with the planning board is that our things are fairly complicated and they need legal review, they need public hearings, and they also need input from other boards and committees. And so, I, it, poor Heather, she really put up with me. So, what I came up with was the idea that about five months before town meeting, we come up with some bylaw language that we'd meet with county town council and review. And we're going to, and then in step two, draft number two would incorporate edits from council. And about four months before town meeting, we have a public hearing. And we also meet with the select board and these seven other bullets as appropriate. And I wanted to add a bullet here. And I wanted to add a bullet here, which was the zoning board of appeals. And so the idea was that anytime we're thinking about what we want to put forward to town meetings, whether it's the fall or the spring or whatever, that we would decide which of these boards, or ask which of these boards if they want to weigh in. But two and a half months before town meeting, and it's still before the warrant closes, we get a draft three. And hold a second public hearing, and then based on any final edits, we get it to the clerk for the warrant. And the warrant closes a month and a half before town meeting, and that was a date that was really important for me to understand, so like if we wanted to put something for fall town meeting, we have to do those steps before September seventeenth. Oh, no, that was last year, but it's plus or minus by the calendar for this year, right?
Sally did, or maybe this isn't a question for you, but are there like notice requirements for public hearings, like do we have to notice the public about a hearing being scheduled to certain number of weeks or days in advance?
Right.
Dude, yeah, so that it has to be in the paper, two for two consecutive weeks for a minimum of two weeks.
Okay, so I mean, the timing on this is like even more, I mean, we have to, we need to be advertised in the public meeting, as you just pointed out, like many weeks in advance of the public, of the public.
Yeah, to be, to be, like typically, the deadline is, is, is three weeks before, is three weeks before the meeting, is the deadline for that.
So I would add that then, with public notice, three weeks prior.
Right, so there is also, we can have, we can have public information sessions, which are separate from public hearings. So we are required to, so those, we don't have to notice two weeks ahead for information sessions. So there, there is a subtle difference between the two.
But hearings are required?
Hearings are required, but there's only one hearing that's required.
The second one could be two weeks notice for a public information session.
So it, it honestly, that went, the, when that actual hearing will be, will probably, will be the latest possible, what we want to be able to do is at that time, give the, 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 the most latest draft out for public comment. But having, but not that we're not gonna have any, meaning that require, we, Mass General Law requires a specific hearing, you know, that, with, with, with this, for zoning changes. But you don't, we're not doing that at the beginning, that would not be, we would not be doing it in draft one and count that as the hearing. It'd be, it'd be much closer to town meeting, the much more mature document that is ready for prime, you know, that is ready, and we're, but, but we're open to making it, you know, we're open to changes to making it better, you know what I mean?
So I would suggest that the first one that says draft number two, we don't, we, we, we could go through all these other boards and committees and get all this, and, and departments, and get their comments, and then have a public information session. And then get final draft three together for a public hearing with three weeks of notice advance, advance notice to public.
Yeah, so I, I have one. Let me, let me, you know, we, we are asking questions now, I was wondering if we were gonna hold them to the end, so I have one, two points on step two. One is that in the past, there have been questions, and I don't recall how they've been answered, as to the appropriateness of asking the ZBA for their input on essentially the law that they will have to adjudicate on. And whether this is because they're an adjudicator, they're a body, and they are following the zoning bylaws, is there, can they, should they have input because they are going to be interpreting them? So that's just, that's just something we, we may need to get town council just to, to clear up, because there have been questions about that in the past.
Okay, and so let me, and, and I agree with you that we should get council to explain that my thinking and putting them on there was prompted in part by watching the last zoning board of appeals meeting, which I'm a liaison to, and that there's a lot of smart lawyers that could point out pitfalls in addition to what Anderson Krieger could point out.
There are, and we've certainly had, I know, I know David Feigenbaum has come before us before with his comments, a lot would very erudite. It's just, just a question of how, how that, that communication is, is done. The other thing is that I, four months before town meeting, we're, we're presenting, we, we need to, these committees will probably want to see language which is more or less final before they give us their recommendation, because otherwise we'll have to come back to them, and they might say, hey, wait a sec, this has changed a lot since you showed this to us. So it's a question of timing, how, how ripe do these things have to be before we give them out for comment? And I don't know if it's four months or three months, I just, you know, it's, it's.
Well, certainly, it has to be enough time, if, if we want to have a public hearing that requires three weeks notice. And it has to be done before the warrant closes, and, and so say we were talking about the fall of this year. So say we were looking at some date in the teens in September, right, you back up at least three weeks for the notice and another week for scheduling, and it would be sometime in the middle of August that we would have this public hearing. And we've often said that the middle of August is when no members of the public are around. And so then for fall town meeting, and actually, if you look down below, I broke it out. We, we would say that the first public hearing, and now I'm in that chart, where it says deliverable, and the second deliverable says draft two, and in the middle column, it says fall, that we would do this by mid-June, because if we wait till the last minute in August, no one's around.
So Brian, could you scroll up, please, because the chart is, yeah, let's take a look at the chart. There we go. So we oft, we've had, so this, this gets to be kind of tight, because if we're gonna have the public hearing, we want the language to be fairly final by the time it gets to the public hearing, so that we, we incorporate only the changes we get at the public hearing, so the public knows what they're, what they're looking at, right?
Just to be clear, though, these public information sessions, that's not like we're not getting feedback. So, so, so I want to, the, in this particular word, a, a hearing is just a requirement for the zoning toward, you know, toward, towards the end, but we, the idea is that we're getting feedback the whole time, so I want, it's not like we're only.
Good word for it instead, you said it was a public information session.
Yeah, so number two, so I'm just, I'm focusing in on the draft number three presented at second public hearing, so that, that box is, I think also where I would say, that is where we present it to the other boards and committees. Because at that point, we've had, it's, it's more or less gelled, if we think it's appropriate to present, I think it's, we need to give them language which is fairly final, in the sense that, so that we don't, just so that we don't waste their time by giving them something that's half-formed, that we change our mind on, and then we come back and they'll look at it and say, what the heck, this isn't what we saw before.
Right, and so my question would be, if we were to do that in the mid-August to early September time, is it likely, and Brian, you will know from experience, that selected boards and committees will not be available until right after Labor Day for a meeting with us about whatever we want to bring to town meeting?
A, a, anything that's either before school starts, or within the first ten days of school, will be buried.
Okay, so now we get back to when the warrant closes, because it, because last fall, the warrant closed on September seventeenth. So this is where I got into, when you want to present something to a fall town meeting, you kind of have to get it together by mid-June before people leave town for the summer.
Exactly, you have to split it up. It's basically, you have to present it, you have to get some feedback before summer, and then you have to be like, have a good summer. We'll see you with a next iteration, you know, when you come back. That, that's just, you know, I, I just, that's just how it's.
Public.
Well, it, it's, to be honest, what, what, it, it's not really how we do it, I think we, that's how it should be done.
Yep. So the, the.
We, we've tried to cram it in, just like anybody else, tried to cram it in between the September, October. And it's very difficult to do fall town meeting for that, and that's why it's, it's just, it's just always very hard to do fall town meeting. And then, spring is hard because everyone wants to talk about the budget, so, so it, it's, there's no good time.
This is why I did this, Brian, is because I was really confused about how you'd be successful in suggesting zoning changes in the fall.
Well, I think this is the, I think this is the thing, is splitting, splitting it up like this and elongating the process, as painful as that is. But there's, you know, there's no point in, in having, you know, several, several meetings if there's not, if there's not good attendance and not good feedback.
Yeah, so let me, let me, let me put in a, since we're coming on, we have two minutes left. May, maybe, let me make a, two suggestions. One is that we separate the concept of when we talk to the public with, when we talk to other committees, since most other committees are actually, will be meeting throughout the summer, there are some which do not. So for instance, Housing Partnership Board traditionally takes a couple of months off in the summer, and I can't recall which ones. So we have to be sensitive to that. I think the other thing that you, that you, that we all are coming to the realization right now, is that this board has to be in continual town meeting mode. That we cannot, we, we have to be thinking about articles several town meetings ahead in order to get the process going, so that we will be able to, we can't, to get things going. So in a sense, we are starting really late for this fall, so.
No, it says, according to what I, what I deduced, if we got a draft done by early May, just like two weeks from now, for whatever we want to put forward in the fall, and then we go to our goals and look at that.
Yes, but.
We're not too late.
We are too late in the sense that if we want to put a draft for North Main Street together for the fall, we can't.
You said fall twenty-three in the town meeting.
I'm sorry, what I'm saying is that we don't have anything formulated to go before, we don't have anything in the pipeline for this fall. And so. Pardon?
ADUs.
We don't have any language for ADUs.
Can we get language out for review, drafted for review before the, the first week in May?
In two weeks. I find that really difficult to believe.
Well, there's, there's successful ADU bylaws in peer communities and neighboring communities, and so that would be a template?
I think that if we are, we, the, the idea is that we have something that we can run by council. And this board hasn't actually seen any sort of ADU bylaw or discussed it. So the entire board hasn't looked at these concerns.
Yeah, the fir-, the first thing is going to be an event at the Jex. Right, so like that, so there's, and we're not present, we're not presenting a bylaw, we're presenting the idea of bylaws.
And that's on May twenty-fifth, is that right?
Yep, and I'm just, I'm looking at the time here, and I think we need to.
So all, yeah, so all I'm saying, Sally, is I agree with your schedule. I'm just saying that in order for us to get something done by May, we should have been working on something by February. And so that, I think the, 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 you need to add another box up at the top.
I just started to do that, I just.
Yeah, so we have, we have in the past said that we need to have ideas for initial language, not even a draft, just initial language by mid-February or early March. Because we know that town meeting is gonna interrupt things. So we're, we're several, we're a month and a half or two months already late for this fall. So I don't, that doesn't mean we can't do something accelerated this year, but that's just, you know, sucks.
Right, well, so if, if we, and this is probably a question for the ADU Working Group, but if it was identified as feasible and important enough, then the ADU Working Group would have the assignment of getting draft language together by the first week in May.
Right, if, I, I think that, I mean, so that's a scheduling thing, and I think we, I think what we need to do now is to freeze our conversation on this and bring this up at our next meeting.
Next meeting, good.
Because we are at seven forty-five, and let us welcome Form and Place, John Rufo and Michael Wang, welcome.
Evening.
So we are all meeting here together to talk about our first phase, first steps in phase two, which is what's gonna happen prior to June thirtieth of this year. And so this is, I, I gather that you are looking for input from us as to where to start, or how do you, how do you want to, how do you want around this? You and Brian have had more conversations. I have, so.
Well, Brian and I, we've, we've definitely had some back and forths, partly refining the, the scope, and just thinking about what we can get done working towards, you know, I think we identified a potential date for a community meeting that you put in the calendar, Brian, of June fourteenth. And so the, the trick is, maybe we can spend some time sort of talking about the logistics and the the scope of what we're trying to achieve over the next month and a half or so, and I, I do have a, you know, a, a little presentation that is, that we can use as a framework, if that's useful, but I really think a, a large part of this is wanting to hear from you guys about what, you know, you know, your goals are for this, this first phase, so.
I just have a quick question, so what's, what, what's taken place, what meetings have happened? That we haven't seen?
There have been no meetings that, that I've taken part in. Other than just to.
You mentioned that you've been having some back and forth in terms of, is that in terms of the creative process, or just in terms of what?
It was just hammering out the, the details of, of our original proposal and, and how that, you know, how we might shape that, so there's a phase one that can get accomplished this fiscal year, and so we sort of rejiggered that a little bit in terms of our goals and process, and, and left the, the sort of next phase out there to be kind of refined, depending on how the, the next period goes. And it really was just a back and forth with Brian, taking that and formulating that into an exhibit for a contract, which we signed today, actually, so. We're officially on board for a couple of hours now.
So.
I'd be interested to see, Michael, your proposal, but I'd like to hear what others think.
And that proposal was.
Presentation, not your.
I was, I was about to say that, yeah, everyone should have that proposal. There should be no surprises there, yeah.
Well, I can, we can certainly pull it up, but Brian, if, if I can share my screen, I don't know if I'm.
You should be able to, yep, go right ahead.
Okay, all right, maybe that's a helpful place to start, because I've, I've just got a few things blocked out here. Okay, nice to see everybody, by the way, and thank you for choosing us to collaborate with you, so that's, that's exciting. We really look forward to that. So let's see. And, and, and please interject at any time here, and let's make it more of a, an open conversation than us talking at you, because we really want to hear you guys more at this stage of the game. But I, I did put together this little summary of the sort of tasks that I, I think process and deliverables that could be within this sort of first section of our, you know, undertaking here, and it, you know, it's essentially distilling the goals and recommendations from previous studies, which we've started to do a little bit, just ahead of this meeting. And then, you know, we're hoping to have a series of meetings with you all over the course of the next month and a half, as we sort of prepare to maybe work towards getting a preliminary goal statement together that, that can define ideas about visioning for the quarter, where, where we want to go with it, how the implementation strategy might begin to take shape. And then hoping to put together some, some mapping and analytical diagrams of the quarter, sort of building on and, and sort of different from what the MAPC did, theirs were more sort of factual and recording sort of existing conditions, demographics, u- uses, zoning aspects, and I think ours are gonna be more about placemaking and connectivity, and how buildings relate to the public realm, and, and what the vision is for the, you know, the right of way of North Main, et cetera, et cetera, so hopefully it'll be you know, more architectural and, and planning related. So, and you can see here some ideas about, you know, thinking about important nodes, ideas about gateway, view corridors, streetscape continuity, public realm connectivity, so public, different kinds. So, um, public, different kinds of public spaces and how they, um, you know, knit together along the corridor. And as we talked about in, uh, in previous conversations, uh, how the surrounding neighborhoods, uh, sort of relate to the quarter and what the role is of the quarter and, and, uh, you know, serving those, um, surrounding areas, the relationship. So, I mean, there's many, many things to talk about, about the role of the quarter and, uh, and what, what we, what you all wanted to become. And what, what these important nodes could be, whether they're, uh, gateways, parks, historical assets, uh, commercial crossroads, transition zones, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, we're really excited about, um, sort of diving into some of these, um, thoughts. And we talked to Brian today about trying to see what kind of base documentation, uh, might be available so that we don't have to sort of, uh, recreate something that's already been done, whether that's, um, some CAD files or, or modeling or anything like that, that, that you, you might be able to get your hands on either from your resources or MAPC or whoever else. Um, that would be a super helpful, um, place to start. So, um, John, I don't know if there's anything you want to embellish at any time, please jump in. But, uh, that, that's sort of just sort of outlining what I think we're hoping to do in terms of, um, a little bit of, about the process, uh, over this next phase. And, um, so the meeting schedule, obviously, uh, kickoff tonight and then, um, working towards June fourteenth, assuming that does work for everybody. It seemed like that was a good, good timing in terms of, if I remember correctly, Brian, we were thinking about the end of the school year and, and things like that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we basically were trying to figure out sometime before the end of the school year on a potential off, uh, right, you know, an off night for a planning board, as if we're meeting, um, or, or not, you know, just sometime before the end of school. So that's, that's kind of where we ended up. We thought Tuesdays would make sense because we generally have those blocked off.
Yeah. So if you then think about, um, you know, uh, hopefully an additional, um, two working sessions that we could have with you sort of talking, uh, in more depth about various issues from, um, preliminary planning ideas to, to some of the zoning recommendations that were made and however we want to approach it. Um, we, you know, I potentially identified, um, meetings that might be sort of staggered two weeks apart or so. But I, it, it all comes down to how your schedule, uh, what your schedule allows and does it need to be on a Tuesday? And does it need to be an off Tuesday or whatever? So, um, I, you know, it would be helpful, I think, for us to be able to visualize a little bit the sort of, uh, the pace and, and timing of, of, of how things might shake out from a framework point of view.
One thing I would, I would just add, Michael, in the way we talk about the, the work of, um, listening, recording and synthesizing, I think, one way to think about between now and January, uh, in June thirtieth, um, is really is, it's, it's the lion's share of the kind of listening and recording process. Um, not that there won't be other, uh, a lot of other time after that to continue listening. But, um, a lot of, a lot of the time that we're spending now is really trying to understand, uh, people's, uh, people's goals, people's ideas, people's visions, that kind of thing. Yes, we're doing mapping and analytical diagramming and trying to begin to really analyze the, the public realm, especially for people to begin to visualize. But, um, one way of just thinking about it is we're really hitting the, uh, listening and recording, um, segment hard in the next sixty days. And then especially at that broader community meeting, um, on June fourteenth, really, uh, really trying to take in what people are saying and what they're feeling and how they're reacting. So that's, that's another way to kind of look at it in a, in a kind of general, um, uh, general approach.
I just have a super quick question. That sounds great. The working sessions, did you think that these were going to be ninety minutes, two hours, something like? I, I think that kind of determines whether or not we could incorporate this into an existing meeting or whether or not it would have to be one. So that might help the board, kind of, if, you know, how long do you think these sessions are going to be each?
Yeah, well, um, you know, we've been working recently with the Hull Redevelopment Authority. Uh, we actually had a two-hour meeting with them last night, so it's been one of those weeks. But, um, a- and we've generally been meeting with them for about an hour and a half to two hours. Um, just to kind of, um, have an opportunity to get in-depth. And we generally would, 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 you know, come with a framework, um, you know, slide presentation, just to help, uh, try to give some structure to the conversation. And, but then try to, as John was saying, allow as much opportunity for you all to, to take it where you'd like to take it. Um, yeah, so, uh, may- maybe ninety minutes is a good amount to, to sort of plan for and see how we go from there. If, if that seems doable for you all, you know, crazy schedules, I don't know.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say ninety minutes, Michael. I feel like the, the hall meetings have been right around there and it takes a moment for people to digest and then inevitably all, all kinds of issues come to the surface that you aren't expecting or that you are expecting. And so it feels like a ninety-minute discussion, uh, on average to me. So, um, I just want to jump in and just say we have about twenty minutes left on our schedule and I'm sure that's a little flexible. But, um, we seem to have a problem with, uh, keeping this schedule on this board. So just, I'm sure that's not unique. But, um, let me, um, so I will be very quick. So, um, when I first heard you speak, I thought that you were talking about all of these things at the top of your slide, in a sense, as a lead up to the Community Stakeholder Group on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
You, but you have kind of said that you are in listening mode now. So I don't get a sense, who are the, who will you be listening to between now and June fourteenth? Are you going to be having other outreach attempts? Um, so that was the first thing. And then I wanted to say that it would be great if we could have some materials to be able to show at Town Day, which was June fourth, so that we could actually get some interactivity. I don't know if we have a, we don't per se have a planning board booth, but I'm sure we could.
We do, we, we do now, actually. We're going to have a, it's good, it's, it's going to be under the Planning Board Conservation Commission and Climate Action Advisory Committee.
Right, so we can sneak in a corner away from the trees and put some stuff about North Main Street. Anyway, that was, the first one is my real, of course, I love that the first part is great.
Okay. My, my thinking is that, given that these are ninety-minute conversations and I, and I agree with John and Michael that, that ninety minutes is a good amount of time. I mean, if, we might even run over by fifteen, but whatever. That seems to be a workable period of time, that we shouldn't try to do it on a Tuesday night when we have other planning board business because this is a special project. And so, um, when I just looked at my calendar a minute ago, I accidentally looked at the Monday date. And then I realized, oh, that's a Monday, not a Tuesday. But then I thought, well, maybe we meet the night before a planning board meeting, but that might be very hard for other people on the boards. So I'm just putting that out there as an idea. But, um, I do think that having working sessions, um, and even in advance of those, um, you know, some guidance about what we're going to be working on in each session would be great.
My, 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 my sense is that it'd be nice to have, I know your, your initial, uh, presentation was strong in visuals and it would be nice to have something visual to frame the conversation. Um, you know, it was nice to see some of the, some of the drawings of, of what we might talk about. I know we can actually have a conversation around, you know, specifics on where we might go with that. Um, and you had said something about giving a, a presentation tonight. I'm, I'm assuming that's what this is, but to do so that we can have, I, I guess, sort of, um, I, I'd like to be brought up to speed in terms of what, what, what is our vision? Or, or what, what, what is a starting point for a vision?
Right. Well, that, that's, that's exactly what I, I was, I, I, I have a few slides on here, which I, we can run through them really quickly and then, uh, you know, stop or circle back at any time if.
I mean, if the others are willing, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing those.
Okay, um, well, I mean, let me just jump in here. I'm, you know, obviously we've, we've sort of just come on board here and, but we did, uh, you know, want to put some thought into, uh, where we're, we're going with the conversation here and, and making sure that we can. So we, we were thinking of, of you all as the sort of steering committee in, in a sense. And that, so these, these first couple of meetings would be with you just as, uh, sort of the committees, you know, making sure we're all get on the same page and we're putting forward, uh, you know, a unified message to, and at our first, a larger stakeholder group meeting. So, um, you know, essentially what we've done is we've, we've gone back and reviewed the, um, the master plan document and the MAPC study in much more detail. Um, also saw the triangle study from a while back. But, uh, you know, I think what, what's interesting is, um, just the consistency in the, the goals that are, that are, are stated across those, those two particular documents, um, about North Main Street. And it appears, you know, sort of very high level in the master plan document and in a number of different places, you know, referencing evolving opportunity areas and the, the goals for contextual infill and, uh, you know, streetscape improvements. And again, these are sort of happening at a very high level here. I've got to find a good place for all your beautiful faces so I can read some of the stuff here. So, I, you know, the balancing development, uh, section, I think, is, is particularly poignant for, you know, what imagine you all are, are hoping the vision for the quarter will be. And, and, uh, you can see some highlight, highlighted areas there regarding, uh, mixed abusees. Um, you know, creating and preserving housing opportunities, uh, contextually responsive new development, uh, addressing issues related to, uh, refining, uh, problems of retail leakage, et cetera. Um, and, you know, I know you're all intimately familiar with this, so I don't need to kind of go through in tremendous detail here on each of these things. But I thought there were a couple of, um, this, um, pages in particular that were sort of right on in terms of where I thought we might be headed. In terms of beginning to structure a, uh, you know, goal statement or a, a vision. Um, and this page from the action plan, uh, document, um, I think really begins to identify a lot of the things that, it's consistent with a lot of the things that the MAPC was, was, was looking at. Less restrictive zoning, development incentives, higher intensity development, uh, increased housing choice, parcel consolidation, increased building heights, all these things that I, I think, uh, are part of, of how one might, uh, begin to shape, um, uh, the future of the corridor. So, um, so we took those things, um, combined with input from the NAP study and kind of put together this, uh, you know, sort of bullet point list of, of six, uh, items that we felt sort of captured the essence of, of, um, the framework potentially. Uh, and so this is where I think we'd love to have your input on, you know, uh, is this where you, you all are at in terms of your thinking about it? And, uh, again, it's, you know, uh, the, the sort of list of things that I've already, um, mentioned, but, um, contextually responsive new development. And it's, it's dealing with both, um, the public realm improvements as well as the potential for, um, shaping new development. Uh, there's some interesting things, um, across these documents. Like if you look at number six there, which I've starred, um, identifying zoning amendments and design guidelines. And then you see, i- in, in many places, it says less restrictive zoning, development incentives, more allowable intensity. But then it also says promoting existing neighborhood patterns and character. And so, um, you know, in some, in some cases, you could argue, are those, you know, uh, how do you find the appropriate mesh of the balance of those two things? And, um, in some cases, it said, maybe there's certain locations, uh, you know, in some of these, uh, evolving opportunity areas where you would take one approach and another, others where you want to be very sensitive to, um, you know, um, continuing the, the, the contextual character, uh, of the surrounding areas. So I, I, I don't know if, if anybody wants to react to this, but this was sort of.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's great. I, I, well, um, not, not to monopolize, I, I, one, one of the things I think would be great, um, in lieu of an actual physical walk through the neighborhood, might be where you could take us through and, um, by photographs and walk us through. Uh, you had, you had done a little of that, um, in your initial presentation. Um, but it would be nice to, perhaps if, if time permits, have you sort of take us photographically on a walk through, uh, North Main Street? And we could talk a little about the historic assets there, um, and sort of about the character that exists. And then, you know, morph that into what we could, what we could do with it. Um, but I, I thought that the idea of a, of a, uh, yeah, something like that, that where you, where you take us through. And, uh, we could, particularly some of the, some of the, the buildings that are marked as historic as well as the ones that may have potential for, for broader development. Um, and, and that would be something that our group, the planning board, would talk through.
Yeah. You know, I, I think, uh, that's an excellent idea. And, um, I, it's interesting when, when, uh, we were sort of formulating what we thought would be included in this first phase. Um, we actually to, just today moved, uh, up into this section, the idea of doing, uh, representative street sections. Sort of as you move along the corridor, sort of thinking about how the existing conditions of the, the, the buildings and the parking relate to the right of way and, and all that, and sort of imagining maybe four to six different, uh, you know, unique and representative, um, experiences that you would have and how they all connect. And what, what is the transition and is it a logical thing and where, where, you know, um, how, how does it sort of crescendo towards the, the downtown, et cetera, et cetera? So I think that would be a really exciting thing to do and then we can talk about, uh, the kind of pluses and minuses of, of each of those environments and, and as a way to begin to hone in on, on, uh, what, you know, what the vision is, so.
So I agree with what you both said. Um, and the word that I keep coming back to is this idea that this is a fairly granular analysis, but not so granular that it's literally lot by lot. Um, but there are, there are, um, sections of each side of North Main Street that can be considered to be looked at, um, as a, um, a unit perhaps. Um, but, but even that sounds like it might not be granular enough. Uh, so it's just that there's so many individual circumstances, you know, one part of North Main Street has a whole bunch of historic buildings that might be really interesting to explore how they can be incorporated into the vision of expanded housing and expanded commercial and, and, um, a, a complete streets, public realm. Um, another part of North Main Street, um, might have a whole section that is office buildings. And so how does that relate to the recommendations and so on? And then there's concerns that were raised, um, with regards to the MAPC recommendations about, um, um, what do you call it? Aggregating the lot behind the Main Street lot. And that works in some places and doesn't work in others. And that was the subject of a town meeting vote a few years ago. So it's a really important thing to take into consideration on a very localized basis. Um, like there's some lots on North Main Street that are already aggregated, one lot down. So, you know, like next to Glenwood. So that's what I'm saying. It's what you were just saying, Michael, is exactly what I was thinking, what Nick said too, is what I was thinking. Just take it by section and look at what the opportunities and issues are.
Right.
So I just want to.
I, I think it's also nice to just get the creative juices flowing, just to kind of see what's there, what, what's really great about what's there and what's not so great. And.
Yep. Um, I just want to say we've got about nine minutes left and, uh, want to leave room for eaching or Kurt, if you folks want to have anything you want to add.
Eric, did you? Go ahead, Kurt.
Oh, I, I don't think I, I, I agree. Well, I guess with the comments to date, I think that would be a constructive, uh, step in the process. And yeah, I don't, I don't really have anything to add at this point.
Okay.
Uh, for me, it's great to see you guys again. I think that, for me, it was really exciting to have you guys on board because A, I think many of us on this board have not gone through a zoning process where we, we've resoned a whole space. And so that knowledge, your professional knowledge of that, your experience of it, is really helpful because we want to get to a point where we can see it i- in the zoning laws, right? And so to get to that point is a little bit mysterious. Um, so your expertise would be really helpful. And from just before you guys came on, Sally was showing us, you know, the, the, the project schedule that's necessary for us to take it into town meeting and get a vote. And it, it gets tight because we're hoping that this thing will come, uh, fall twenty twenty-three. Um, so what, you know, that, that expertise from you and that leadership is, it feels reassuring. Um, also. to, to, I think Nick's point about your sensitivity and maybe even the benefits of you being an outsider in some ways and seeing the space and seeing the quarter and, and having a reaction or, you know, of knowledge and, and creativity of what that could be is exciting to us. I think because we've seen it in, in graphs and in various ways, talking with MAPC, it's, it's refreshing to see it in a new perspective. So that guidance is really wonderful too. And your creativity, your sensitivity, your, your ideas are, are really would be wonderful. And I'm, I'm curious about what those working sessions will be like. And I think maybe I'm sensing that some people on the board are wanting a little bit more form to, to that because we, we are also sort of, I am in the dark a little bit about what is going to happen between now and, and the public gets to see it. Because I, I, I think, you know, we want it to be a really attractive thing. How do we get there is kind of a mystery. I would have to say, you know, the MAPC project was so, it was really helpful, but to a lot of people, it's very abstract still. And so, you know, getting that to, to an exciting point would be very necessary for us to communicate this to the town.
Yeah, just to respond to that, I, you know, I, I did get the sense that when we were first talking, that the visualization aspect of it was something that was seemed very important to you all. And, and we love working that way. And, you know, so it's kind of ironic that this presentation, I, we were, you know, I, I literally have gone back through all of the, the MAPC zoning recommendations and thought about the recommendations that they were making and saying, questioning, is that really kind of the right approach to that? I mean, in terms of, you know, dealing with what you were saying, Sally, with the, the rear lot conditions and had the varying budding properties behind, and are you crossing a zoning district and this, that and the other? And all the, all these things that come into play in that type of search. And it applies to all of these conditions. You know, in terms of what's appropriate density, defining streetscapes, do you mandate open space and where is it located? How do you access parking? All these things. I mean, and so the, the tricky part is, you know, I don't think, you know, we're going to be able to generate this, all the visuals right off the bat. So we're going to have to find other ways to kind of talk through it, you know, both with photographs of existing conditions and, and other precedent examples. You know, I, we have these examples from recent projects that we've done. I showed you some of these in our, our interview, I think, with you. And some of them came in into our proposal. But this is a, you know, a recent complete streets study we did in Springfield, for example, and, and looking at, you know, some of these zones between the bike lanes and the sidewalks and the role they play in kind of shrinking down the, the crossing experience. But they're, they're combined with these type of technical drawings where you look at a street section and you see, you know, where the flex zone is, the pedestrian zone, the bike lanes, the part, all these things. And so we can use all these kinds of graphics. And then ultimately, that's what we'll be trying to do for the quarter itself. But it's probably not going to all materialize before the end of June. But, but anyway, I think between, with a combination of, of photos of your condition and, and previous your studies and experiences we've done, hopefully that'll be enough to get the juices flowing.
So I just wanted, so we have like three minutes left. So one of my questions I want to get back to is what is, who are you listening to over the, before June 14th? What, who are the people that you will be reaching out to before this? Because I'm, I'm trying to understand the, the practicalities of what you're going to present to us on the board and on the 15th, which is like a couple of weeks away, essentially, two and a half, three weeks away, maybe. So who will you be reaching out to?
Well, we can, you know, we can do it any, any way you want. If you'd like us to include some more people, but I, I honestly felt like these first two working sessions were to be with you all as this, as kind of the, the steering committee. Now, if you feel like there's some other critical stakeholders or members from other boards, et cetera, that you'd like to have in the dialogue, which certainly are, are, you know, welcoming, you know, we'll be more than happy to have them join the conversation.
No, I was just, you said you were in listening mode and I was just wondering if it was who it was. And if it's just, it's fine, because I think that by the time we get out to talk to the general populace in June, we should have a, a fairly reasonable presentation to give them so they understand we're going to. So do you have a good idea of what you would be coming to us on the 15th with? Or whatever the date is?
Well, I mean, we were just talking, I think at Nick's suggestion of, you know, beginning to look at various sections of the corridor. And I think we can, can use that as a way to maybe dive into some of the recommendations that have been made to date. And just, I think ultimately we want to try to, you know, get formulate a, you know, a vision of some sort that is, what, what are the, what's the framework for it? And it's, it doesn't want to obviously appear like it's a done deal. We, we've sort of figured it out and we're presenting it to the community, obviously. We, we, we want it to just be, you know, but we also want to, to steer it in, in a, in, in the right direction. So I, I think it'd be great if we could refine these elements, put together, you know, some initial, you know, collection of, of images that we can share with you and then, and, and sort of get the conversation going in our first meeting. And then for the second meeting, I think at that point, with your initial feedback, we can begin to generate some diagrams that we can then use those diagrams for our second meeting to kind of get in a little bit further and think about other relationships. And then coming out of those two meetings, then we can refine that, that package and these, and these, these goals or, or process and, and take that all to the sort of community meeting conversation.
Yes, to, to build on what Sally had said earlier, do we, do we want or need to front load our meeting schedule to make ourselves available so that you could listen to us? And, and I guess to answer Dab's question, I guess it's us that you guys are going to be listening to at the beginning. Do, do you think just the regular schedule of, of the planning board meetings is sufficient to keep us on the schedule that we want to do? Or do we want to have an extra meeting?
It sounded like it was an issue of how much time you had available in your regular meetings, et cetera.
Yeah, I think.
Usually really packed.
Yeah, maybe we just talk about that. I just, I, I don't have an answer to that. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
So before we, before we finish this, Dab, can I just make two points? One is that, that I personally, and maybe others on the board too, want to go back and review the actual quotes of the people that the MAPC interviewed. So that I have ringing really fresh in my mind, what people that they talked to actually said. And I know there's a big compendium in their final report. And so that was like a homework assignment for me that, and maybe others if they care. But then the other thing was going into the very first meeting that we have, and I love the idea of you bringing image boards, which is a word that I got from my husband. Because he is a landscape architect and he does, he takes pictures of, and Eching knows this too, pictures of similar things and just puts them up to give you kind of this, this environment of, of what, of, of looks. But in, in advance of you creating those, if there are specific homework questions that you would send us, maybe it's four really open ended questions. And then we would, you know, send them back to you just, and you can incorporate that as just the first little springboard into the first meeting. Those, it's just an idea. I don't know if you ever do that. But those were the two things that I was thinking about.
Yeah, that's great. And we did that, again, just recently in Hall, we, we actually came up with a list of six questions. And we didn't send them ahead of time, but we sort of used that as a, a framework for that first conversation. But I, I like the idea of, of sending that ahead of time to you so that you can, you know, begin to come up, you know, think through your answer. Whether or not you, you, you share that ahead of the meeting or just bring it to the meeting, I think either way is probably fine at this stage, but.
Either way, right.
That'd be great. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. I mean, I don't know that, you know, we, we look at it, glance at it, but it's still, it's nice to have.
Right. So like, and one thing I would say about the image boards, you just recently, just a moment ago, shared an image of a complete street project that you did. And it was lined with taller buildings than I think anyone can imagine.
Sure.
North Main Street. And so being careful not to draw into images, images that would make people alarmed.
Sure, sure.
Is, is key because, and I do want to go back and look at all their concerns. I just remember somebody coming to a public meeting or a, it was a planning board meeting about the Minneke site. And it's a woman who lives right across the street from the Minneke site. And she had very strong feelings about what should and shouldn't be on that site. And it, it taught me that this is really about listening to the people that already live there.
So I am, I'm going to be the opposite of listening. I'm going to cut off. We're getting, we're getting, we're five minutes over already. I just want to make sure that you, you folks have enough information from us tonight to move on to what you need to do. Do you need anything else from us?
Well, I think the one thing that would be helpful is to try to identify a first date for our, our next meeting. Is that something we can, whether it's a Monday night or whatever, that would be fine, but a few weeks out?
Right now, we're scheduled to have a planning board meeting on May 10th, which is two weeks from tonight.
In that Monday, the ninth, it could be a town meeting session.
Right, exactly.
Could we do like the 16th or 17th or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the 17th is, or the 16th is, is possible for me.
I could do the 16th.
Just the Tuesday.
No, no, well, the 17th, I was saying if we did it, oh, you're saying because it's in between planning board meetings, do it on the 17th?
He's just giving the options that.
I think that. So if our next meeting is on the 10th, then I would say the 17th would work. That's a Tuesday. It is not. How does the rest of the board feel about shoving another meeting in there?
Tuesdays would be better than changing up the dates for me.
Okay.
Yes, same for me. Tuesday is better than Monday for me.
So Tuesday, May 7, could be our first two hour or 90 minute working session.
Why don't we keep it to 90 minutes? And just because, how about starting at 7:30 instead of at seven? I know that Kurt's happy with that. And we will keep it to 90 minutes. So we will get out of here by nine. If I do my math correctly.
Right. So we'd be meeting the 10th, the 17th, the 24th and the 31st.
Well, why don't we, yeah. So why don't we hold off on scheduling that second meeting until, I think we have some flexibility. Let's see how the first meeting goes and see if you need it shorter or, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because.
Well, just in terms of putting placeholders in our calendar.
Well, sure, we could put the 31st. I'm just really scared of having four meetings in a row. Actually, it would be five meetings in a row because we would be having, if we have, and then we have a town meeting on June 6th.
Yeah, special town meeting for.
Yeah, so it gets.
But this gets to the point that, that Eching was making, and you too, Dab, was making about, it's almost like we're always in town meeting mode and we've got to.
Yes, it is.
Really, really tightly. And we can't let time pass to.
Let's, let's not, let's not shock our systems too much at the beginning. Let's, let's, it's, it's like the frog in the warm water. Let's, let's just heat the water up slowly. So anyway, I think we've got, we've got a meeting with you folks. We've got some ideas of what's going to happen. If you have any more questions, please reach out to Brian and you, you guys are going to come up with some brain ticklers for us to think about.
And we need to get, do we need to get Michael and John the copies of the, the design standards and the, the designs that were put together for the center of town is kind of a model? Or is that something that we could talk about at a later date? I'm, I'm referring to the, what's it called?
The Center Business District.
Yeah, yeah. There are some interesting, there are some interesting concepts in terms of the fenestration and the detailing on the corners and, but that might be something that we bring in.
I think.
Please, please send us anything so we can.
I, I would think that would be coming in probably in the next phase.
Yeah, yeah. But we should, we should get them. Yeah, send them the whole thing with the pictures and everything.
So why don't we, why don't we, okay, so we'll deal with all that stuff offline so that we could. Yep. Okay. So thank you all very much. And we will see you guys in however many weeks that is.
Very excited to be working with you.
Yeah, we really look forward to it. Great. Thanks for your time.
See you guys.
Okay, so we are now prioritizing planning board goals. So Brian, if you would bring up, so a few weeks back, we did come up with a list of goals. And now it's time to put some order to them. And Eaching's one about moving things more efficiently and quickly. I think we have to move to number one. So.
You're putting it up, Brian?
He has that look about his face of concentration. So there we go. Okay, so I think we can start moving things around already. So I think zoning board changes for North Main Street are probably going to be fall of 2023. I don't think we can make it.
What year did you say?
Fall of 2023, same year.
Okay, yeah.
So why don't we move that down to the bottom? Not in terms of, just let's think about the things we want to do in the next six months. Because otherwise I think we'll be scared to death of getting anything done.
That's going to go to the bottom? I thought that was one of the tops since we're adding two more meetings for it.
Well, I'm just thinking, can we? Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. It seems like we're, I mean, we, it's a long lead time, but the idea.
That diagram where you have horizontal bars and they overlap.
It's a gant chart.
Gant.
Yeah. Yeah. So, okay. So let me, let me back off in terms of, so how, in terms of figuring out our priorities, I think we've already prioritized North Main Street. And so I guess what I was trying to say is we've, we've set, we've decided that's probably the most important thing. So.
Can we do an A list and a B list maybe? That would be like, already.
Okay. Yeah, I admit I didn't, I didn't go.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the idea, the, the goal could be spring. Maybe the goal has the goalpost, maybe we got to move the goalpost later, but the goal can be spring. We can say that. It is, but if we are, if everyone's like, there's no way this is going to be spring, then it's stupid to put spring. That, I think that's.
Well, let's.
Well, so can we make one of our immediate priorities is that we make sure we're all on the same page with that? That, I don't know where I put it. It's on the floor, the, the thing about the timeline to town meeting. So that we can figure out exactly, I mean, is this supposed to be, what's the most important thing that we want to do? Like if you had to only choose one thing, what would it be? If you could only choose one more thing, what would it be?
It would essentially be, we have limited resources. What are, we're going to rank the things that we know we absolutely want to get done at the top. So there are, so let's, Brian.
I like bold. Bold is good.
Bold is good. So let's do that.
Like, like the.
Yep. Okay, Brian's going to town on these already. We, we're all done. We can have no more.
Well, so the MBTA multifamily zoning change, there's an action plan that's due by December of 22.
But we don't have.
It almost like, that's, that's a thing we have got to be working on now through the summer to get it done by December.
Are we waiting on guidance? So wasn't that still?
We have to wait for the state to come back and give us the actual final guidelines and.
Right, don't put it in bold. So the tree canopy bylaw for spring 23 would be great, as would the ADU. So both of those to me, and, and we look at our timeline that we're, we're trying to edit, our timeline to town meeting, and we make those way at the top. our timeline to town meeting, and we make those way at the top, and we stay on track on the timeline. Um.
So we have, so we're already getting, so we have things. Parallel. There, there are things we can do in parallel. So for instance, Holton Street Visioning can be done in parallel. We don't need to do anything except wait for MAPC to bring back a report. So that.
It's gonna, it, it might be a little bit more than that, but it's not going to be as intense at this phase as, uh, you know, over this next little bit. There's going to be more, more, more work after. I, I, I think as you see that all these things are getting bolded. The idea is that there's, all of this has to be, uh, being worked at at the same time. That's different than a, you know, a goal of finish, a goal of finishing that, meaning, yeah, we're gonna be working on all of these. I'm working on all of these. It, it might not all happen in the, in the time that, and I think that's what this conversation is about is, what is actually possible for spring? Uh, back to Sally's comment, or not doc, uh, document. The idea is that by this time, we would at least already have been working and having a draft to present to, to, to legal. It's not where we sit down with legal and, and at this, in, in May and say, we're thinking about this type of bylaw. Meaning that the work for that, that we can present to legal, there's probably at least, you know, I don't know what, Dea, in the past, at least two to three months of, of work before we even go to legal. Cause we're just like looking at other bylaws and seeing what's possible and getting something together that's usually a hodgepodge of a lot of different things to get it to where we want to be, then we would give it to legal as a, and that is a draft one a- as it comes back. What legal does is is simply work with us to say, what is your intent? Okay, let's get that in a legal, let's get that in legalese, to get your intent down. So that, that's, that's a little bit more in lengthening the process. When you, cause we talked about this first week of May that you're saying, I think there would have already had to been, like I said, maybe two to three months of work, or, or so. Yeah.
So.
So that would, that would be if we were going to, um, to fall town meeting for twenty twenty-two. But if you look at my chart, which is written all over now, but say we were going to spring of twenty-three, um, and if you add a box above late November to mid-December that says ideas for a draft bylaw, we have to have those to counsel, or we have to be clear on our ideas by when, um, by this, in the summer.
I mean.
Uh, yeah, so I think that by, by, we have to have earnest discussions about what we want to go to for the spring town meeting in September. And so we have to have draft language probably, um, by beginning of October.
Right, and in advance of early September, there's some kind of document that one or another of us can produce that is something to bounce ideas off of, not just, you know, talking in the air. But we start with a working structure that we react to, or some reference tool that we bring to a planning board meeting, you're saying in early September, right?
Yeah, and that's, so, so I think the, so some of the things, some of the goals that we have in front of us are ones that are outside of our control. So the waterfield lot, I think we should, we should move that down. Brian, just physically take it and move it out of number one and put it at the bottom of the list. Cause we, we have no control over that. We know what's going to happen, so we just have to, we have to plan for extra time. Um, what are the things? So the, the tree canopy bylaw and the ADU bylaw, those are, those are going on in parallel.
Yes.
Most of the people on this board don't have to focus on that. And so we will let those groups know that we are looking for some draft language by some period of time. In particular, the ADU one will be presented by us. I don't know how the tree canopy bylaw, whether that will be a CONCOM measure, an article or ours, or will be a joint measure in any case.
Right.
So we should, we should, those two working groups should be told, um, what our timeline is and the fact that that has to be brought to us earlier so that we can all have our say.
Well, according to the chart, we would want to have ideas for the draft bylaw discussed by the planning board in September.
Right.
And draft number one in, um.
Whatever the, sorry Sally, are fine. I'm just saying that what are the things that we, so we don't have to focus on these as our high priorities, those are in process. So they just have to be.
Okay.
So the question is, so what do we do? What does this board focus on in the time we're not looking at ZBA stuff over the next four or five months? And so, um, what are the things we can work on? Um, Holton Street Visioning is something that, well, there will be some time this board has to spend on. It's mostly a, MAPC doing the legwork. Um, MBTA multifamily zoning, I think we do have to plan for that maybe in the fall. But until, until DHCD comes up with, with real guidelines that we have to respond to, I, I think we, we did, there's nothing we can do on that yet. The. So I'm just trying to, there's, all of these are in a sense, things we want to be doing, some of them already in process, so we don't have to do anything right now. What do we want to do? What does this board want to focus on over the next three or four months in the meetings we have?
So this is where I came to the, the Gantt chart thing, that, that if we figure out what the, um, schedule of work plan is for all of these. And then we can see, these are the ones that we really need to be focusing on in this month, and this month, and in this month.
Well, first we, yeah, I think the idea is we can figure out, we can put these into a Gantt chart, we can put them into anything that makes sense. But the idea is that what are the, the priorities, meaning that, um, we've just scheduled to, you know, two, two meetings in May for North Main Street. Realistically, there's going to be, uh, another two. There's gonna be one more at some point, and then that's June fourteenth meeting. So this is all at least before June thirtieth. That's, you know, that's only, that's just two months. So there's gonna be, uh, during the summer is kind of really what we're really looking towards here. I think the idea is, what do we, like Dea said, what are we doing in the next four to six months? It doesn't look like that there is a lot that's in the pipeline at all related to fall town meeting. It's a little unclear about this definitions project.
Because of the change of count, potential change of.
But I, but, yeah, so, but this is not, I haven't lost hope completely, but also not super positive, happy thoughts about, about that. Meaning that it, it's unclear if this will actually happen in fall, but clearly, clearly needs to happen. I think, I think one thing that we could do during the summer months, because we're really not doing a lot of outreach and that we could be doing some more joint, joint meetings during the summer. Cause I believe, like Dea said, I believe it's only the Housing Partnership Board that doesn't meet during the summer.
That's great to hear.
So we could actually meet with, you know, CONCOM Design Review, um. We've actually never met with Disability Access Commission. I mean, there, there, there's, there's, there's certainly things that we can be doing during the summer months. Uh, for Zoom, you know, Zoom, Zooming that are, that are, that are important and on this list. Um, so, yeah, I think that's what we should be kind of looking at towards, towards August. In terms of town meeting and legislation, the, you know, this would be the only thing that, that, that could potentially be for fall. I'm not seeing anything else for fall.
Um, so I, I do think that, um, I wish I had had time to do this already. I have had it in my mind that I was gonna make a list of all of the sort of cleanup items that I have scribbled all over my copy of the bylaws, um, in the last two, three, four years. Um, and maybe I should just go over that with Brian and Dea with the idea that we would identify if any of those, and we would do that soon, could be presented as, these are cleanup articles at Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah, um, I, I, I'd be, we should meet on that. Cleanup articles that don't, that, that are not, there's not a lot of heavy lifting and everyone, everyone agrees on, um.
Sure, yeah, so, so why don't we put in a five A? So we're, we're doing, we're sort of looking at, um, zoning bylaw cleanup. So one of them is, is the one that we have to wait on. I have no idea when the determination, when the select board is going to make a determination on what council will be after the end of fiscal year. So, um, yeah, so let's just do, uh, zoning bylaw cleanup.
Okay, so I will do that memo so that we have something to, again, bounce off.
I mean, I don't even know if it has to be, uh, a subgroup, if, if, because it's kind of sounding like a, a subgroup to work on that. Um, we don't, I don't think we even need that. I think that if you come up with a memo, Sally, and this board takes time to look through them, that would be, um, I think that what I would like, and if you highlight number six, because I think, Brian, we are going to be doing that.
Yep.
Um, I would like to see, um, script number nine be something to work on, and number eleven. Um, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is essentially, hopefully, gonna be moving on its own, although we will, this board will have, um, we're, we're gonna have one. We're on each of the selection committees, and there are four of them. So at some point, we, we will need to decide who from this committee wants to be on our selection committees, so.
Can you review quickly, or maybe we don't have time, the, the schedule that, that was worked out for the MIPC leading up to its first meeting in June?
Um, I don't have that in front of me.
I think Brian.
Yeah, if you give me a minute.
I don't know what this times two and times three means. Does that mean number of meetings?
No, that's the.
Those are a number of people that's, that, that said, yes, that's important to me too.
Oh, I see.
Three people said that that's important to me, and we should work on that.
So in terms of the actual, what this committee has to do, what, what the planning board has to do with the impact thing, that, um, when it meets in June, there will definitely be some, um, onboarding, as they call it these days. So, um, we would, at least one or two of us would be active with them, uh, on their monthly meetings. So I don't know how that impacts what this board does in its meetings. So, uh, that's an important thing. I know it would take up a lot of time of this board. Okay, so I'm gonna stop talking. Um, so those who want to jump in, please do.
Can you leave that up, Brian?
Sorry, that wasn't supposed to happen.
Who's, Clara, are, are these goals through the end of twenty twenty-two? Or through?
These were supposed to be for the entire year, so these were supposed to be March to March, you know, based on the election. And, and, and the first good thing that we try to figure out here is like, okay, legislation wise, if we're gonna be, you know, what are we going towards? That's kind of like the biggest picture thing. Um, and then beyond that, then now we're kind of getting into the, these other smaller projects. Like, what are, are we gonna have a couple people work with me, or one person work with me on website activity? Or is this just a something that I work on? You know, that, those, those types of things. But, um, so, so I, I, I think that this is like, this is, this list is, it's kind of a hodgepodge. Obviously, it's a lot of different types of tasks and tools needed, right? Um, so I, I think, but, but this is, it, it, this is helpful at least so that at least we can put together, um, just almost like, almost scheduling out the next, you know, maybe three months of meetings.
So, um, one thing that's not on here is something that, um, Nick and I talked about, which was the, um, uh, Sims Corner Local Historic District Study Committee. Um, and the, the reason that just popped into my mind is this model of, of, um, each person on the planning board having, um, not responsibility, but participating in one project that's on our goals list.
Well, we do have, I think, we, we, we did, someone was invited previously to be on that committee. That was Heather Hannon. And she declined.
That you're talking about the, the Sims Corner?
Yes.
But Nick, you had said you might be interested in.
I, 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 I think Kurt had decided that he was gonna be the delegate, but I, I, but I certainly would help out in terms of, um, doing some of the legwork on that. I'm not sure what the positions are, but I absolutely, I would be interested in, in following up with Brian offline to just find out where that project is and doing some of the legwork.
Yeah, so I think Nick's recollection is right. I think ultimately, I don't think I had much on my plate. I think I, I volunteered to take that on. I, I guess I, I'm not sure what your point, was your point to add that as an additional to do, or is your point? Additional to do? I'm, I'm not sure I followed your point.
Well, no, okay, so my point was that there was an achievement by the planning board in that there was a vote. I guess it was a vote of the select board to create the study committee. And so the study committee got rolling, and Brian, you did some major work for that, um, with people from the state. Um, and it got to a certain point, and then it sort of got parked. And having achieved the goal of creating the study committee, you would be ashamed to park it and not have it be translated into a full-out, successful implementation of a local historic district for Sims Corner, or a determination that it can't happen there. But the reason that LHDs are important, I think, and Brian helped me with this, is that they bring potential for funding into the town for things that might be related to our work.
It qualifies us, that's what's called being a certified local government. Um, but just, I, 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 it is a, a good goal and one of mine personally, but it is really a historical commission kind of project as well, like, meaning it's not just our own or one that we're completely steering.
It is an important project or not?
Um, I, I, um, I, I certain, yes, uh, uh, and certainly the chair and, um, member Clemson are very serious about the project as well.
I know I had volunteered to be the liaison with the historical, uh, board committee. Um, and in, in, I suppose in that, in that vein, I, I would be interested in seeing where uh, we've left off with the Sims Corner Historic District Project and, and I guess working collaboratively to see where we can take it.
So, so let me, let me just say from a pragmatic point of view, since this is a historical committee project, we are helping, I think that we just have to wait for their lead. The other thing is that I think that we have one liaison on this project, not two.
Right, no, I know that, uh, that Kurt was, yeah, oh, I see, sure.
Nick, if you are, if you are going to take the lead and do all of this outreach, and Kurt is our liaison on this project, then.
I'd like to work with Kurt, you know, I.
Yeah, so I would suggest that you and Kurt discuss your roles on this so that there's one person that LHD knows to go to.
Okay.
There was that, that, there's, there's not too many lines of communication which can get tangled, so that's all I'm saying. Um, but I think that in terms of, so that's an ongoing side issue, and it's not a side issue, but that's a pair, a project that goes on in parallel.
So if I could answer your question about, you know, looking at this and the reactions to it, I, I'd say, you know, the biggest bang for our buck would be to work on the North Main Street and the Holton Street Visioning Project. And I appreciate that you put the tree canopy in the ADU as sub, um, things that this whole entire board doesn't have to, um, be concerned about, but those two, the North Main and the Holton Street, I feel like would, would have a humongous impact on the town. Um, and it would bring us, you know, closer to a lot of the goals of the master planning, the, the economic, um, development portion, the housing portion, I think the Holton Street especially, is something that it bring the commercial base, um, up is, is gonna be a huge game changer, I think, for the town. I think we really should, um, move forward with that and figure out how to, I know it's MAPC, it's doing a lot of the work, but, you know, I think we should step on the pedal for it, um, and get a greater commercial base for it, for our town. Cause it's, it's such an issue time and time again.
Yeah, I would, I would jump in too, and, uh, sorry, so I was just gonna quickly say, I, I, this kind of comes back. I think when we first put these together, I, I do start getting concerned with, you know, having a list of like seven, eight, nine goals for the year. Given, you know, I just see, in my limited experience, you know, these meetings unfold and what happens with priorities and how long it takes us to sort of like have productive dialogue and everything. It just seems like it takes a long time. And I'd rather really narrow in on some important. And I'd rather really narrow in on some important goals and make really constructive progress and actually get to a conclusion on a couple of important things than sort of like. Make parallel progress on a lot of things, but not actually get anything done. Um, so I guess I, I would just agree with E Ching's. I, I think what she was saying, I think what you were saying, E Ching was like, you know, those should be like our pri, key priorities and maybe some of the other things, like when there's time to work on them. You know, maybe that are the lower of the priorities, we should try and slot those in and see if we can make progress.
So I, I agree, but we, there's not a lot that we're gonna be doing on Holton Street for the next several months. Just because. It's going to, M A P C will be doing the, the ground, they'll be doing the study. So they might come back to us once or twice. But it's, it's not going to be our focus until we get that document or that first draft or something from them. So I. I think that I agree, I completely agree with you that we need to settle on a few things we definitely will need to get done. I'm just concerned over the next several months, we will be not quite spinning our wheels, but there will be times. Where we don't have anything scheduled. Uh, so we could either say, we, you know, for instance. Um, we're not gonna be talking about North Main Street until, for three weeks, right? And we probably won't be talking about Holton Street until, you know, in any real depth until. Maybe June, I don't know how long it'll take M A P C to really get the ball rolling on that and give us their first draft. So it's just sort of there, we need to fill in some of the times between now and then with some of the smaller like priority projects.
Well, number nine and number eleven are, are um. Important background, you know, sort of infrastructure um, uh, goals. Um, and if, and if the planning board is sort of in a hurry up and wait mode with some of the um, property slash land use. Topics. Um, I mean, this whole thing about outreach is really top of the mind because of the Communication Study Committee. Um, so that's a thing, Diab, those two.
Yeah, I, I would, I would second or third or whatever, fourth, whatever that is there, just the idea of website activity and outreach materials. Transparency, I mean, the word is a little, not that it's, it, it makes it seem like we're not being transparent, but I think the idea is that. It, is that we, we um. Yeah, I think it's more of just outreach a, a, and, and more conversations and um, or, and if not, but, but certainly have a more active. Um, and well, really, what do we want to do with the website? Not so much have an active one, but like, what are, what are the goals? So we can, we can certainly have conversations about that.
I think that's a great agenda topic, and if we can, you know, give ourselves a good, you know. Thirty-five, forty-minute working session and we all come with specific recommendations or give them to you ahead of time. It's a great topic for when we're not talking about a Z B A petition or one of these other property or land use based projects.
So that's something that where I would say, because I. I, I. There are some legwork, I think, that needs to be done before the first meeting. In terms of assessing the website, bringing up into, you know, one of these things where. There could be a directed conversation where I brainstorm sometimes, I think, are a little too chaotic because. Um, not all of us has a chance to see everything on the site, so maybe some legwork prior to that, so that we can have a more directed discussion. Um, and that's where I would ask some, a couple of people to maybe say, yeah, I can work on something and we can schedule this for um. You know, in four weeks, so whatever, four weeks, our next meeting, I actually have a calendar here, what do you know?
Well, I know E Ching's um, on the A D U um, work group. And um, Diab, you and I are on the tree. Work group. Um, can you, can, is there a way to create a, just a website work group of two people to?
There's more than, yeah, it's just, it's a question of people just wanting to volunteer their time to do that. I mean, that's one of the problems is that we, we. I, we, we have to work on some of these off, offline in order to make any progress. And I realize that's a burden and I, I feel very awkward. Saying that we can do these things without people being able to sign up for them. Um, I, you know, I would say that, so we are. Um, are, we have two meetings in May, the tenth and the twenty-fourth. And so the question is, is there something that can be done, let's say um, by the twenty-fourth? Because we've punted a few things from this evening and we can move to the tenth. And I, oh, what time is it now? I'm already off, it's nine o'clock.
We're a few minutes over. I think the only thing that we have for the tenth at the moment is that's when our, we'll go over our Z B A petitions for the month. So there's like, you know, whatever, three or four, something like that.
So the idea, the question is, if we wanted to do something like website stuff or public outreach and come up with some um. Some work before then, is the tenth, is the tenth too early? That's two weeks. And I don't know what people's schedules are. I know that E Ching and I have to work on a presentation for the uh. A D U working group that we were supposed to get done by our, this week.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, so um, I don't know that that's going to happen. But, so I, I know that we've got things coming up very quickly, um, because the A D U presentation is essentially a month from now. So um, I can't volunteer for the tenth. I think the twenty-fourth is gonna be difficult because again, people working on the A D U stuff will be. Occupied trying to get stuff done for the twenty-fifth, which is when the A D U presentation is at the Jinx Center. So.
So I think the, 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 the premise here is the idea that there is between meeting work that. All board members are needed to take on in order to get our goals achieved. Is that what I'm seeing?
Well, that's my impression, but I'm just a one. And if others feel that we can do this work during the board meeting, then. We should at least take a crack at it. If, if, for instance, if, if no one has the time to do some of the stuff outside of the meeting, then the only time we have is in the meeting. And so that's just the reality of it. So.
Well, could we ask each board member to look at the town, excuse me, at the planning board page? The town website and to send to someone by some date, probably Brian, by whatever date that we want before we meet. Um, their um, comments and observations and questions, and then Brian, you can compile that as a. Springboard for conversation when we sit down to talk about the website, the webpage.
Yeah, I mean, we can easily, I can compile that, yes.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm gathering by the lack of, of volunteers shaking both hands in the air that. Um, there isn't a lot of time available off, offline to do these things, so.
I would say I'm, I'm only just a little bit reluctant because we just added, I think, two meetings already, like our meeting schedules, so it just, it feels like. You know, we've already added some things to meet some of their.
I, I completely understand Kurt. I am not, I am not pointing fingers because Zoom won't let me because they'll disappear. But yeah, no, I completely agree. There's a lot of stuff and there's, so if, if you don't have time, you don't have time, that's perfect.
I would say I'm, I'm happy to, I guess, I may benefit from like a little bit more of a refresher from this last conversation or clarity on nine and eleven, what the expectations are, but I'm happy to. To volunteer some time to work offline, whether it's with Brian or whoever, to try and. Tackle one of those two, uh, but I, I, I would welcome a little bit more guidance on what exactly we're hoping to accomplish and. I will admit, it's, it is almost in many ways easier for me to carve out a couple hours, like off. Off hours for me, like I can, I can find those um, here and there, and if I can get some independent work done, or if it's a matter of coming in a meeting with Brian. For an hour at some point, like during the work day, I can, I can figure that out. So I'm, I'm happy to volunteer for, for one of those two. Again, I would just welcome a little bit more guidance on, on what the expectations are to successfully meet these goals.
Yeah, um, that sounds great. Um, and.
So my understanding about number eleven is the word transparency is kind of a trigger word and it comes from those in town who have not. Felt that the town pushes information out to them in a way. That they need, and so that's why they say that things are not transparent. So the whole concept of outreach is pushing materials out to people. And making sure that our website is a go-to place to answer questions. So I, that's my framing of number eleven.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's really interesting because it's funny, I, I've had these conversations with a handful of people. In particular about ten Converse, like in the context of that, like when I've brought that up to numerous people I talked to, like, did you know that this was happening? And they're like, oh, no, that's so interesting. Like, oh, yes, I really would have welcomed some information. But I go, I'd love to learn more about that, or I would have loved to, when even when the elections were coming, I go, I would have loved to learn more about the candidates. And I was like, oh, where did you look for information? Oh, I didn't look anywhere for any information. It's like, okay, well, like, I, I don't know that the town can hand deliver to you, like, all of these things. So it's, it's an interesting dilemma.
Trying to address Kurt, and I think it's great that what you're hearing when you have these, you know. Passerby conversations with colleagues and friends, that you're hearing what they're hearing too.
So I think that, so this is one of the concerns that the Communications Subcommittee of Town Meeting is looking at, is how to get things out there, but. And, and I've had the same, I have, have the same experience, Kurt. One thing we could do is take a look at what we have control over, which is the planning board website and ask. Is there something we could do there which would, for instance, make it easier for you to find agenda items? Um, we could simply say you have to go to the calendar and click on this, and that's how you'll get our agenda item. Or it's just, uh, there's, 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 you know, it's sort of user experience things in the trade where you do a, you do a. You plant someone in front of the website who doesn't know what they're doing or what you want you say, can you do this task? Can you find out where all the darlings are for ten Congress place? And if they can't do it in five minutes, then that's an issue. I mean, that's maybe beyond what we're trying to do here, but I think that. We, one of the things I was thinking about for outreach was, for instance, a quarterly planning board memo or something like that, which would discuss things. So for instance, you know, we, we do biannual um, reports to town meeting. Can we do something for the rest for town residents, which could be more in depth, because you don't have to just put up ten slides in ten minutes? So those are things that would be sort of ways of. Getting, you know, we, 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 we can do what we can, um, you know. One of the things I wanted to do way back when I was more naive and younger was to have a, a planning board meeting in each of those precincts. To bring planning board to the people, as it were, and I don't know if that's possible, right? But, you know, things just bizarre things like that.
That's the thing that you could do as an agenda item, like this Tuesday, it's open um, discussion of precinct one issues. This Tuesday, it's precinct or whatever, and I mean, you could do it in the.
And, you know, reaching out to town meeting members, asking them what's going on in their precincts, things like that, or things that. There, there are layers of access to the public. Um, I'm going to try to remember what our actually agenda is right now. Um, so I think um, and it's supposed to be. Eight fifty-five position description.
Position description at eight fifty-five.
So I think that, why don't we do this? Um, we, we'll, we'll try to get something for website um, stuff on the twenty-fourth. Um. There you are, Kurt. Um, so Kurt, if you want to set up a meeting uh, with Brian and I um, on that. Um, or then there's the, the task management thing, that's also something that we would, you know, that, that would be something like. Um, how do we set up tracking of projects, a Gantt chart, something like that, so we know what's in process? So we have these ten projects going, we immediately know what stage they're in. What's the next thing that has to be done on each of these things, so that we can do the year to year and a half planning that I think we need to do to get things ready for.
I tried to do a Gantt chart and I failed miserably because I don't have the right tools.
We, there are free, I, I looked at this extensively about four years ago when I was thinking about trying to get tools for us. Um, so I can, I can revisit that. There are, there are tools.
I definitely, I would like to support Sally on, on that. I, I think we should revisit her. Um, timeline with all of the lead times, so what we want to get done, to the extent that we. You think a Gantt chart is, is valuable, I would definitely support that because. Uh, I think it'll show us where we are and what we're gonna, you know, are we behind, et cetera? So I, I definitely uh, think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, so there are some online platforms which do project management. We essentially want project management is what we're looking at, but we want baby project management rather than full-blown project management.
Yeah, we're not building this shuttle.
We are not building the shuttle, so I.
But so I'd be happy to send out a revised draft of this timeline to town meeting document. That incorporates comments that were from tonight.
That was super helpful and to, to see visually would be great if we get a, a baby, as you say, uh, project management software, that would be uh.
So we, we've got that on our agenda for our next meeting. In any case, because.
Okay, that's good.
We stopped conversation to go to formal place. Um, so why don't we, I think we have, I don't know that we've actually prioritized things as much as I think we know. We know how many balls we have in the area at the moment. We have some big ones and we have some, a few smaller ones. I don't, I think that we're okay for now to move on to our next um. Item, trying to get us back on schedule, which is, uh, we're at nine oh eight. Okay, so um. Oh, okay, so we have position description and leaf blower. So um, the idea of the position description review was simply that um. When the town planner position was, was, was thought up, I don't know, twenty lifetimes ago. Um, there was a position description written, and then it was, I think, modified maybe once, Brian, since then. So this is uh, essentially an almost, let's call it a ten-year-old document, give or take a couple of years and.
It, it has been modified since I've been here. I want to say it was modified six or seven years ago.
Yeah, so I think, I think that the position of town planner has become much more complicated. And there are a lot more um, responsibilities that are part of that position. So I think it's useful to look at. What, what reality right now entails in terms of what the town planner should, what should be in the position description? And so for instance, I know that one of the things is staffing of different committees. And so I think that having the town planner available for staffing the. M P I C is, is, is a great thing, but that's an additional burden that's not in the position description. Do we relieve him of other staffing responsibilities that we think are less important now? So those, that's kind of the discussion I thought we could start having. Um, I don't think we'll have a chance to. Go through it completely, but the idea is to start, is to think about um. You know, Brian, if you could scroll down and, and we need to get a version of this without the red lines, which I think I'll take from our, our last one.
The red is helpful, I, to the extent that.
The red, the stuff that you added, Diab?
No, this is from the last time it was revised.
Yeah, this was, this, yeah, this was added, like I said, I wanna, yeah, maybe it was five or six years ago, but say six on an average, but.
Are you doing this now with the Historical Commission? You're like.
Uh, I like those last three on there on the red.
But those are already there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, so I, 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 I go. Um, yes, so I go there, there's only, there's one heritage district uh, in town. Um, they meet on average once a year.
It's rangeli.
Yep, so like, so all this is happening i- is the point.
But so here, the district commission is different from the, the historic.
That's the, you're talking about the local historic district?
L H D, right.
Yeah, L H D, so, so it's already part of my um. Job description that I uh. I assist uh, and staff the Historical Commission.
Yeah.
So as you can see, all this was, it was, it was the Board of Selectmen, not the Select Board. Um, so. You know, so just the idea that this needs updating in general is what.
Yeah, so, so I would say that, you know, there's a, there's a limit to how much Brian can do. And so I think that one of the things we should look at is. What, what are the, so for instance, I think that attending the majority of Historical Commission meetings is not a good use of Brian's time. Um, I think that. We can, I would say staffing the Historical Conditions, Position, Commission and providing uh, efforts through research and bylaw drafting. Is appropriate, but I don't know that Brian has to actually be at the Historical Commission.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that would, I think, because, because.
Well, if you're staffing a board, though, you're um. Getting all the meetings scheduled, you're, you know, in compliance with open meeting law. You're making sure that the minutes get distributed and posted to the archive and the town.
And so I do not do a lot of that.
Yeah, that's like way much. You do that for us.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah, I don't, yeah.
And you do that for the Z B A, or does Janine do that?
No, no, that is one hundred percent, that is one hundred percent Janine, and for the historical commission, um, so, you know, I, I set up the, you know, in terms of the admin portion, um, which is what you're talking about, you know, I set up this, I set up the Zooms. Uh, and, uh, but Jack, you know, the, the chair, he posts that with the clerk. Um, and, you know.
The agendas and the minutes.
Yeah, and he's, and he sends, you know, um, he works with the manager's office to set a, a butter's notices for their, you know, demo permit, you know, that, that is not me. I, I'm more of the supporting their efforts through historical data. It's really actually, and also a lot of the work is actually grant, grant, uh, work.
It doesn't even say grants here.
And it doesn't even say that, and that's actually more, that's probably, there's probably more work with that than there is with attending meetings.
Yeah, I just, so I, that's, I think that's, that's where one thing we could go through, right? And, and maybe not this meeting, because we don't have a lot of time, but the idea would be to say, what do you actually do for each of these bullet points? What's the actual workload? And revise the position description so that it meets what Brian's actually doing.
Yeah.
So that we don't have these, these sort of legacy words. So I don't know what coordinate and direct volunteer committees that arise from various projects planned for the town mean. That's really vague.
Accessory dwelling units, trees, local historic districts, M P I Cs.
Yeah, but I think that's the it's.
It's really still at the direction of the planning board? It's at the direction of the planning board? Was that the?
Yeah, I think.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be there.
Like, for instance, that it has to be because of us. It could be, for instance, that someone says, hey, Brian, would you like to, um, be the moderator for the waterfield task force?
Yeah, or would you like to compile all the ARPA requests? Or, or would you like to, um, staff the downtown improvement action plan?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so I think there's, 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 there's some, you know, we want some flexibility in here, obviously, but we, we need to make sure that, you know, um, some of these are, are little, you know, I would like to, there's nothing in here about, you know, working with a sustainability director. Um, because we have one now. Um, there's nothing in here like saying, working with the, um, I mean, that may seem obvious, but I would say that if we're going to say Brian's supposed to be talking to all these other people, then we should at least add that, maybe add in our, 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 our economic development person who might be coming in with the ARPA money. Is that something you want to do? Does Brian really need to talk, and I'm just looking at it, to the Sandbar House reuse committee? Does that still exist?
I don't think so.
I mean, it's just, you know.
All right, so it needs updating.
Some of these needs updating, and then we should look at, um, some of the newer roles that Brian has found himself in.
Brian, have you ever been asked to update it yourself?
Uh, so, yeah, how this, this, what's in red here was a combination of Brian, what are you actually doing for these, you know, group, these groups, and also the other half is Brian, we think you should be doing this, you know, so you're directing my work. And then, so this was both of that. Um, so it's, I, I've, not like I've been asked to update the entire thing, it's more of, um, in this one, this one, it was more of, we would like you to, we would like to have it in writing, for example, these things in red. I mean, that, that, that's, that, that was kind of how the last, how it went the last time. Um, not, um, and then others were just being reflective, meaning assist town boards, like, and, and there was nothing in my, um, job description that had anything to do with, um, assisting the town with directing forty Bs, which is certainly part of the job. So like, it was kind of both, it was a couple of things. Sorry for the long-winded response, Sally, but it was, it was basically some things I updated and other things they were put on by the board.
So.
Just as a parallel example, although I don't know if it applies here, at least once in my working years, I was asked to rewrite, actually more than once, to rewrite my job description to reflect what I'm doing now.
So.
I don't know if anybody else has ever.
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's very, that's a, yeah, that's, that's common, and I think it's a good exercise for the person, I mean, and.
I can take the first crack, I can certainly take the first crack then, and then we can go from there.
So I would suggest.
That's what the, you know.
Yeah, I would suggest the first crack, Brian, is, is what are you doing? And then maybe the next crack is what do you think you should be doing?
And should we look at, Brian, any, uh, town planner job descriptions that, I mean, that opens up a Pandora's box of variety. But if you happen to know of somebody in your professional circle who seems like, well, I don't know, maybe just ask if they like their job descriptions.
This is also seems especially prescriptive for a job description, it seems, for like a.
It's especially what?
Prescriptive, like, it's just, it, it's way, like, way too specific, it seems, but, um.
This reflects, I think, um, yes, this is, this reflects the board at the time these changes were made, so, yeah.
Right.
Um, so Brian.
It's out of character.
Yeah, may, may I suggest, Brian, that when you look at other planners for their descriptions, you choose planners who have small planning departments?
How small is small?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a few communities, like with the, you know, that are, the, the, um, that are around us that have a lot more people, even though they're, like, you know, let's say they have around the same population, or even a little bit more, and they have, you know, five people in the department. So it's, it's, it is a little different. They're, like Winchester is its own kind of thing. I think a lot of departments that are just one-person departments are, are really not towns like Winchester and are far away.
So.
But those would be job descriptions that it would be interesting to look at. What does the job description of a one-person planning department look like?
I mean, not surprisingly, it looks very similar to this. This was put on, also, this was, um, changed through, you know, eventually the personnel department. Um, so, you know.
So you do everything.
Yeah, so they don't approve, I mean, they, they certainly look at other job descriptions, um, to make sure that it's reflective of what, of, of what, you know, planners do and that type of thing. So that we're not the only ones involved in the change of this.
Point, I think if we could find things to take out and find things to, E Ching's point, to state mo- more generally, so that it's a flexible, um, uh, capture. I understand why, from year to year, some board or committee wants a very specific reference made to something, but, I mean, like, E, E Ching thought it was very prescriptive, and I personally think that there's things in here that would be great if you didn't have to do.
So what, so, um, so that we.
Yeah, let, let me, let me know, uh, let me know, um, not, not necessarily at this moment, uh, yeah.
So why, so why don't we just say, um, can we, do you think that you could have something by the twenty-fourth? That's a month, or would you prefer to rewrite this? So we can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think it would actually take very long to, um, to kind of reflect what's happening right now. Um, and then put, like, kind of highlight the things that are up for discussion on whether or not this is something, you know, the board thinks should be on here.
So, so does that mean the tenth?
I think it's possible, you know, I think I could.
It's major.
Let's pencil it in for the tenth.
I think, yeah, I think we should try, or I should try.
Okay, cool. Um, so then, uh, the rest of the board, if you could, uh, put your thinking hats on and look at this job, this position description, and figure out how you feel it should be, uh, updated for the modern, the modern times. Um, and then, uh, we have ten minutes left, or nine minutes. Why don't we, uh, take a crack at the leaf blower?
Um.
I'm so happy you put this on the agenda. It'll be fast, it'll be really fast.
Um, I, it's, it's strangely specific, but I, um, am concerned about it, mostly just from a personal point of view. Uh, I am gardener, you know, uh, kind of pay attention to climate change stuff, but, um, you know, uh, gas-powered blowers in particular, um. What, what are you doing, Deeb?
Oh, interesting, sorry.
There's a, there's a New Yorker cartoon.
Share with you. No, it was me.
No, but. They, um, are constant here in Winchester, and as spring came about, I, I remembered how annoyed I am at them. But, um, the, just the negative environmental impacts that they have, um, the, the carbon emissions that they, they put out are, are, um, kind of out there in, in terms of how much, how much, um, you know, fumes they, they pro- pro- uh, produce, and how much, you know, oil, gas intake they, they, um, they take. But, um, also the, just the leaf blowing in general, the destruction of the environment for insects, plants, and then the subsequent chain, that birds and things are, are pretty horrendous, but, um, you know, the quality of life for humans is, is impossible to be outside when they're going on for hours and hours. And for work from home folks, I think especially these couple of years have, um, more people have noticed it, I think, um. It happens most, mostly during the work week, but, you know, sometimes in the weekends, and air quality, um, the dust is pretty intense, and it sort of goes beyond the work area, um, and it lasts for, you know, many times after, after it's produced, so. Um, and just the hours of operation, like, you know, if you're, in my neighborhood, it, it goes from, like, yeah, uh, Saturdays even, but like, it'll go for like four hours straight, it's just constant. And so it's, it's, it's bad. So I, I, um, just, you know, wanted to know what was going on in town about it, and, um, asked Deeb and Brian about it, and they said that there are people in town working on it already, and I just didn't want to, like, uh, you know, do, do double work, but I, I found out today, um, well, Brian told me earlier, but, um, there's a grassroots organization already going on about it, um, Rachel Whitehouse, um, George Wood, I think is his name, but, um, they're doing, uh, they were sort of latching on to this national movement called, um, what is it? Is it Quiet? It's like Quiet Communities, I think is what it's called. Um, Quiet and Clean, and, um, they're, they've already been working on it for about a year, and they're working on a, a warrant article for fall of this year. Um, and following a lot of our local communities, um, I think it's Lexington that just recently banned.
They just did, they just did it.
Yeah.
A few weeks ago.
They banned outright?
It's, uh, it's a phased, it's a phased thing, so.
By twenty twenty-five, I think she said, and Arlington has.
Yeah.
It's a big deal, yeah. Cambridge is working on it, um, Arlington has had kind of an ineffective one, but so, but they're, they're gonna follow, um, supposedly. I think even they're having a town meeting right now, um, following Lexington's lead on it, and many, um, I think people are somehow latching on to it, probably because more people are at home. But, um, I wanted her to, I want to see if you guys would be welcome, um, to have her come in, because they're, they're sort of in a listening phase right now. They don't, they have something drafted up, but they're also, um.
Who? Is it Rachel, you said?
Rachel Whitehead, yeah. The only bylaw that we have in Winchester is a construction noise bylaw. And that's, um, for, I think, mechanical landscaping, or something like that, where you can't do anything before seven in the morning. And so that kind of stuff is tasked with, but you can do it during, I think, Saturdays. And so that's why you can hear, um, seven AM leaf blowers on a Saturday morning, and which is why I made my email. But they are sort of trying to go a different route, too, in that they're really actively listening to, um, the landscape companies in town and trying to, um, center them, because there, there are a lot of landscaping companies and, um, and they provide a lot of jobs. And so one of the things that they're working on is, is, um, even like a tools library. So they, they have two, um, electric, uh, leaf blowers now that they can loan out to people to use. Um, and she's gonna try it out this weekend, um, the first. And then, um, even along with Catherine Clark, our congresswoman, um, they're gonna try to attempt some kind of a buyback program where they will buy, you know, exchange the gas, gas-powered stuff, equipment for electric. Um, and, you know, helping, helping some of these companies, um, you know, not have such a burden to, to change over. Um, but it seems like they, they're really being very thoughtful about it. They're, they're sort of doing a soft launch of, um, a grassroots kind of a thing, and um, the only thing that they would be sort of asking for really is maybe a support, um, later. Um, I don't think that we, we need to put it on a priority, but it, I think it, it does address a lot of things that we're um, in the master plan in, in terms of, uh, I think it's a health issue, um, it is an environmental issue. Um, it's an economic, economic development kind of issue, too. I mean, they're really trying to make it so that we don't destroy these landscaping companies in, in terms of like, you know, um, not regarding them in this change, but to help, help them sort of ease transition into a more sustainable, healthy, um, environmentally friendly way. So I don't know, if, if we could invite them for like a ten-minute chat later, I think, I, I don't know about now, or, or is there more ready later?
So, so I, I think that's a great idea, so what, what I would suggest, um, if there is, well, first of all, what I would suggest is that the rest of the board give an opinion on whether they'd like to have this group come in and talk to us.
I'd be happy to hear from them.
It's like a group of two people.
Yeah, I mean, it's Kurt, Mick?
Um, I guess, I mean, uh, I, my first, my first, uh, I guess, question is what would we, what would we take off the agenda?
I like that, I like that thought, um.
Um, but, but, yeah, I mean, yeah, you, you, you do, you do realize that these, um, small, small motors make a lot of, they, they are, they're not that efficient, and they spew a lot into the atmosphere. Yeah, I, I hadn't heard of this before, um. My, uh, there was a New Yorker cartoon that stated that, uh, the caption was, there's a salesman selling the model, and he said, this, this is the model that you use if you want to make an insane amount of noise and blow the leaves around aimlessly, which is the practice of most, um, doormen in New York City, uh, when I was there, uh, but, uh, uh, anyway, yeah, I mean.
So I think one of the questions on the table is, um, if the end goal is some kind of a bylaw, and it wouldn't be a zoning bylaw, it would be a town bylaw, um, that would, um, change the way things are now and make them better. I'll just be very generic, and the goal is that a bylaw would get voted on. My question is, is that a town meeting thing, and is the planning board the best group to bring it to town meeting?
Oh, no, we're, we're not bringing it, we're not bringing it at all, we're just gonna be.
Asking for support, but it's a general, it's a general bylaw, first of, just so you guys know, this would not be a zoning bylaw. But, yeah, they're, they're asking for support. The question that Deeb is really asking is, is this something you're interested in?
I mean, are they asking for moral support, or are they asking for something for us?
Action, recommendation, kind of like when we do, um, for the articles, any of those articles, just.
Right, but that, I mean, that's the eventual thing that they want. I mean, that's not what they're looking, there's no bylaw to look at.
Can we do that anyway, or, uh, is it, eh, eh, well?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like something super interested in, is what it sounds like.
No, I'm very interested in it. I just, I'm got too many things that I'm working on that I'm interested in, and I think if you, if you can partner with the people that already have momentum in town, and at the appropriate time, ask the planning board if we're in favor of what they're putting forward, I think that's a great work plan right there.
So, so it is a town meeting article, just to quickly get in there.
Okay, I, I'm getting my arms around the whole, yes, definitely be, try to be helpful.
So it's, I, I think, so the role for this board would be simply to listen and to maybe comment on it when they come before the board, if we want to do that. Or we can do that prior to being, if, if, if they do put it before town meeting, we could vote to recommend it, or, or just vote to not say anything about it. So the real question is, within the next three months, do we want to invite these people for ten minutes to tell us what they're doing and give them our reaction? Or is that of no interest? That's all.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear from them. I think it depends on what their work plan is in terms of, are they shooting for fall town meeting? Are they shooting for, for, um, earth, you know, not Earth Day, uh, Town Day? I mean, it, it's whatever, but that, in principle, I would recommend that the planning board strongly consider being in support of efforts to reduce the noise and air pollution of gas blowers in town. But we don't have the bandwidth. But we don't have the bandwidth to lead the effort.
I, yeah, so this, this would just be, it would be like a citizens group. Or, I'm sorry, a residents group coming before us and saying, hey, we have this idea, will you listen to us?
Yeah, it's like the Abidrona River Initiative.
Yeah, so.
I mean, certainly, certainly it's important that we have the sensitivity with regard to all the workers who depend on the machines that they currently have.
Yeah.
Well, I love the idea of a trade out or a buyback.
So, so I just wanna point out that we shouldn't spend more time on the decision whether to invite. Than the actual amount of time they would spend.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm open to to hearing them out. I will say, not, I'm at risk of being on E Ching's naughty list, I'm an owner of a gas powered backpack.
You can borrow one for free this weekend.
Yeah, I, all I can say is that, um. Having seen, uh, there are some communities which, and this is, I I shouldn't go into this detail. What, when, when, when it gets cleaned up in my part of town by the landscaping companies. They actually have five or six people walking abreast with s- leaf blowers on at the same time.
The cumulative decibels that exceed if you were standing in the center of Route ninety three.
Yeah, it's, it's like standing next to a jet engine, so, I mean, but in any case. I think, I think if we invite them for ten minutes to talk to us, that would be, who knows? It it wouldn't be bad, and I.
Yep, let's do it.
Yeah, so let's do it, so each one, if you wanna, if you wanna talk to them and figure out what their plans on, and we can coordinate. Okay, great.
The, the, it's super quick highlight on Lexington, this will take twenty seconds, and then we can adjourn or whatever you wanna vote to do after that. Um, but, uh, so it it passed by almost two thirds margin, it was a pretty, or, um, it was certainly more, um, you know. Yeah, I think it was about a two thirds margin, maybe a little bit less, maybe sixty, forty. Um, and it's, it's banned, uh, it takes a, in effect in twenty twenty five for commercial. Uh, landscapers, and then takes an effect for residents the year later. So that's the, that was, that was what passed in Lexington, like E Ching said, this is starting to become more in fashion, but that's what passed. Anyway, that was it.
And just so you guys know, they're aiming for very low bar in that they aren't gonna outlaw it. It it is gonna be allowed only on the shoulder season, spring, fall, but not summer, winter. And then, um, maybe an hours thing, but very, they they know that.
Would they limit the number of machines that are running at one time on a given property?
Oh, I don't know, but they know that Winchester is not ready yet.
Yeah.
There's a decimal level that they could, that that they, uh, I don't know if that, I mean, there's a state decimal le- level that I'm sure. That if you have actually five people next to each other, I guarantee you, they are above what is normal. If they're doing sustained noise for that long.
So I am going to continue with my note that we should not spend more time talking about this now, just because. Let's stop, um, so, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
And a second, excellent, uh, roll call vote, E Ching.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Belly.
Aye.
D E B says aye as well, so thank you to, thank you to Nancy Pelosi. Nancy Pelosi, I'm sorry. You're, you're the Speaker of the House, Nancy.
You're not.
I'm sorry, our recording secretary, Brian's. Planner, uh, thank you, Win Cam, uh, thank you to everyone who uh, joined us this evening. And to everyone out there in TV land, we will see you in two weeks, bye.